So.
The beds. Um, I guess. I was. It was that bad.
I like the smile. So.
Okay, everyone, we're starting the meeting workshop. Everybody signed in, um, let's see. Adam Clark.
Mister Bernard here, Mister Malloy. Absent. Mister Hernan.
Okay, welcome, everyone. Um, we'll start with the agenda item number one, it's the reading of the minutes of the workshop made thirteen and the regular meeting made fourteen to twenty-five. Two, approved bills. Three, I think I'll turn it over to Nick, planning commission.
Nick Coggins, Trumbull County Planning Commission. Um, item number three is just to amend the general action that was already approved for a uh grant through Champion Township H Works. This is simply an amendment to adjust the local match. Uh, they're adding money to the local match, so we identified as twenty-five thousand five seventy-four. They're gonna increase that local match to twenty-six thousand eighty-eight dollars and sixteen cents. We just need the general actions to reflect the actual number from the grants application.
Okay. Thank you, Nick. Uh. Engineer, can I get it?
Hey, thank you, Commissioner, yeah, Gary Schaefer, Engineers Office. Item number four is to receive an announcement recently passed. City of Warren Council, I believe it was on May fourteenth, it authorized all the county to rename the Warren City Number One Bridge, um, to be renamed. The African American Veterans Memorial Bridge to honor African Americans who mourned Ohio to serve the US Armed Forces, so, um, we concur with with that resolution, we agree with it, we're passing law. If you're, we formally approve that. And then, uh, I think coming up in early June, they're gonna be dedicating. Look, at least we'll have a public hearing, and you want to, you know, lose that, you know, in days, they'll be dedicating. Yeah, I can remember. Just authorize the clerk to advertise your sealed bids for the Boma Avenue sidewalks project, that's a cap or a transnational kind of program grant that is received through East Gate Regional Council of Governments. It's an eighty percent grant money as a township project that we are administering through our LPA process. Also, it's a total grant from that we're gonna go get and administer on behalf of township. So, we'll advertise your bids and then go from there. Number six, oh, that's gonna go from Churchill, through all the way up to the Giant Eagle. Also, including crosswalks at one ninety-three Church. Fifty foot rocks, and it's gonna tie into the fifty-three ten funds. Uh, I know two of you weren't commissioners, but the fifty-three ten is transit money that was gonna be lost from late eighteen, we're going back always, we're able to capture that money dedicated to City of Warren, for Shug Liberty Township by the half. So this will add on to that phase, which will be constructed. Great, so let's do that. Um, item number six, concur with our office to grant special hauling permit in this case. And seven is to concur with our office for special hauling permit for overweight equipment as listed.
Okay. Thank you, Gary. Uh, we'll move on to agenda eight, Mike Swinski.
Jim, Commissioner, this is a change at at the request of the Fair Board for the new four-H building that's being constructed. Uh, you know, in in the course of them wiring the building, there there was concerns that they wouldn't have enough outlets to run all the truck pots and the food warmers in in this part of the building. So they're requesting this change, and this would facilitate that for the, through the electrical circuits, more power, more outlets, so they could do what they they need to do. Uh, so that amount is five thousand seven hundred ninety-eight dollars. And that's being constructed now.
And that's all out of ARPA.
That's all pre-approved out of either ARPA funds and and the the money's there for it. No, no general fund money.
And number nine, agenda item. Is she Mike?
Yes. So number nine, this this, so this is the uh, when when we opened bids for the four-H building, there was quite a bit of money left over, and that generated the memory of understanding for this money to be reused and reused within the fairgrounds. And that was done at the end of last year. And one of those items that was identified in that memorandum is that public address system. So so this this agenda item is to authorize CLR for eleven new utility poles so that we can broadcast into areas that that now we can't. So this is the guarantee that that public address system reaches the entire fair. So and that cost is 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 listed there, eleven thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars for the eleven brand new utility utilities.
If I'm not mistaken, that other bid that came was a heck of a lot higher.
Yes.
CLR came in.
Yeah, and they, because they do a lot of work.
ARPA money again.
Again, this is the same pot of ARPA money that was the residual from the from the low bid of the four-H building. We said the four-H building is gonna be about eight hundred fifty, it come in just under six.
Jim, do you have a question? Yeah, Jim Taylor. What kind of knowledge, so? Uh, I do have a question on some of these monies. Um, this ARPA money was, uh, approved by the board commissioners to give to the Fair Board, is that what I'm understanding? I see MOU on there.
Yes.
In the amount of eight hundred fifty thousand. So. A couple of weeks ago, I came in and I had a discussion about Fair Board and Trumbull County Commissioners.
Right.
So, the way I see it, that there's approximately outside of the four-H building about two hundred and some thousand dollars in extra money. Was that listed in a group bid? Um, if it was, is there, was there competitive bidding? Okay, because it's over to seventy-seven thousand dollars. Right? So I guess my concern is, is if there's, on here, it says for uh, let's see, nine telephone poles, uh, expand public address system uh, located, uh, okay, so it says in related structural project as authorized by the board uh, of Trumbull County Commissioners. So I guess the mother related. I mean, you have eleven thousand here. What were these other other projects?
So specifically, I'll talk about this one, okay? So so what this is, ARPA monies and small projects, ARPA money, that seventy-seven thousand is a state Ohio threshold. These these are federal funds, our small projects threshold is two hundred and fifty thousand. So when you look at the sound system, these eleven poles, so this this eleven thousand nine fifty would be added to the cost of installing the the sound system, which was like eighty-seven thousand, we're still well below the threshold for small projects, the ARPA funding small projects. But and this.
But but the but the.
We're talking about.
But our money was eight hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Sheriff Taylor, Sheriff Taylor, Commissioner's Office. It was bid out, Vendrick bid out and won the bid for the building.
For the four-H.
That that whole eight fifty was allotted for that building, just for that project. What happened, because they came in so low, that extra monies was just sitting there for any additional things that needed to be put with that, if you will.
Okay, and that's, and my question is, is two weeks ago, whenever I came in and I asked the commissioners, I had questions about this other grants. And I was told we don't have anything to do with that, right? Where that they have their own, they have their own board.
That was their own project, it had nothing to do with ARPA money. It's not about the grant, it's not about the board, it's it's that was a grant, and Alex, he was just about, she was just, it wasn't necessarily, I I know what you're talking about, Jim, I get it.
Yeah, I do too.
But that part, I want to be very clear, and I think you started to hit on it, but I I'll be very clear. This was not about the board, them having their own board. That was about, that was a grant that they got on their own. Now, ARPA monies are ours, and we are absolutely going to make sure that we are hitting every federal and bidding.
We have it, we have it.
We will get reported on that, we get audited on that. So I think you're commingling the two right now, but but what we're saying is, is whatever money is left over of this eight hundred fifty thousand dollars, whatever it gets dedicated to another project, will absolutely be bid out properly, will absolutely adhere to the federal guidelines that we have to adhere to.
If it exceeds.
So if it's, so if it's, so if it's allocated eight hundred and fifty, they can use that money for whatever else, I mean, there's other.
They have to be approved by the the ARPA attorney.
Individually.
Yes, yes.
So it's eleven thousand here, it's twenty thousand there, it's whatever, to to carry up that other.
Correct, it's.
Even though it's eight hundred and fifty.
If I may, you you have to go back to the MOU, the MOU spells out how they're to, they lost that money. And it talks about, it talks about the 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 public address system, it talks about the swine pens, and it talks about the uh.
You did add the swine, you you.
That was a pretty.
They used language that was very.
So this is only for the the pole.
Yes, so the MOU covers what additional projects it may be applied to, that was done, you know, well before this board came, but either way, at the end of the year last year.
I remember this.
Um, and it's very detailed in that MOU, what the project, what the additional funds can be expended on. Very, I think they even put the word swine in there, I mean, it was very detailed on it.
This is one of those.
And this will be covered by the Trumbull County Commissioners.
The ARPA funds, yes, yeah. That that other project, though, Jim, is not, that was not on, okay, I just wanted to be clear.
It wasn't, but it was tied in with the ARPA funds, it was paid by the ARPA funds, the four-H project was paid by the ARPA funds.
What we have going on, what they, what you were talking about a couple of weeks ago, yeah, this is ARPA funds.
And my concern is this, is, you know, I understand that the uh, Trumbull County owns the buildings. They own the stuff and they get the maintenance, and the Fair Board is constantly asking commissioners for X amount of monies to do the projects that they're looking at.
Well, my question is, it's my understanding that telephone have already been delivered, is that true?
I do not know that for sure.
Carol, do you know if that's true?
Um, I was told that they were delivered Wednesday. Um, Harlan and I drove out there yesterday and counted nine poles on the ground.
So why would they be delivered before we ever approved this?
I I haven't answered it.
Well.
Well, once again. Somebody's putting the cart before the horse and.
Mike, what was the change order for? So that that's the key here.
The change is.
Goods were delivered before it was ever approved.
The change was for Vendrick, which is the four-H building.
That's separate.
Yeah, so then the 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 poles is a, is a request to to use some of the monies from the, from the ARPA to pay for those poles.
So who okayed the poles to be delivered?
The Fair Board.
Yeah, for the installation, so.
Well, Matt Briden Taylor with the visiting. Again, if they're ordering materials like, uh, the sheriff's office buying two more cars and then they're on the hook for the car, and then they're asking the commissioners to to bail them out of the car. I think maybe their own organization should take care of eleven thousand. With the poles.
Well. If they delivered and then the commissioners denied, or who approved the delivery?
I have no idea.
If it's, if it's, if it's up to the board to approve it.
This is the first I'm hearing about.
Okay.
First, and and if it's up to the Fair Board, then I agree, then the Fair Board should take force. I mean, why are we buying goods that hasn't been approved yet, or ordering, but that's that's sitting there on the Fair Board.
I was getting hold the Fair Board. For margin.
Well, I I I'm not so sure it's it's the Fair Board, it's somebody, if the commissioners have to pay for it, then someone from the commissioners evidently had to tell them to go ahead and do it.
Or or the maintenance.
Commissioners.
I don't think anyone from county.
Well, Commissioners, there should have been, let's just go through what the process should be. How do we get goods without a purchase order? That's my first. There should be a purchase order. This is the ask for the purchase order for the eleven thousand nine fifty.
That's right.
If there's. Then how did we get the goods is what I think.
No, I'm the, I'm the only one who does the ARPA, he knows.
And.
Okay, so who called and asked for this material?
Fair Board. And editing Fair Board, one of the Fair Board members mostly. Called for that, which is definitely not the right thing to do.
All right.
Well, uh, Mister Danza wasn't here, but I think it definitely needs to go to him. So this should probably be taken. Yeah, until we find out, until we find out, yeah, we're not gonna be on the hook for.
That would make.
Fire to PO or, this is the first thing was brought to to my attention. I don't know if Commissioner Malloy knows anything different, he's not here, but you know, these are questions to be asked. Premature to do that.
Well, it doesn't matter, it takes more than one commissioner. And it wasn't presented. I know.
Commissioners, I can, Bob, my controllers and engineers, I only have one, one thing to possibly add, and maybe Mike can answer. This says for the installation of the poles, you have to either the Fair Board purchase the poles on their own, or someone donate the poles, and this contract is simply for the installation.
I I have, both the CLRs, but the Fair Board had provided us in its states, and I'll read it. Price to purchase, unload upon delivery, and install nine poles throughout the year. It's just the initiation of the services, so. Pretty.
I can.
It just said it's for the first, it just.
On here, it says installation, that's why we were questioning, maybe there was a purchase order beforehand, or somebody else had procured the materials. So it does just the installation, I, this sounds like it's.
Yeah, Mike, if you could have somebody from the Fair Board contact one of us or find out what happened there.
Sure, sure, I'll I'll contact Fair Board, let them know.
So we don't get into some kind of a quagmire where we start receiving materials before, you know, POs and it'll get very unorganized. Okay, Carol. Um, thank you, Mike. Um, so let me move on to Mister Lee Bogus.
Um, I have, me truly others for workforce development board, I have the next three agenda items. The first point is to approve in time the, uh, Orange Jay uh, Homicide Job Operator Contract Extension between the Workforce Development Board and the Trumbull County Department of Job and Family Services. Uh, what we did is when we procured the the operator is we did a two plus two contract, so we are at the extension period, so we are, we are requesting approval for, uh, additional two years for for job family services. Uh, Homicide Jobs Operator, there's a slight increase in, uh, the cost, which is just administratively cost, administrative cost, very insignificant, our budget is totaled about two point two million dollars, so for administration, less than sixty thousand. Deal, uh, inflationary pressures and allow going to the contract contract, so we were asking for approval and signature for the extension of the Homicide Operator Contract. Next one is authorization of the subgrant agreement between Ohio Department of Job and Family Services, Trumbull County Commissioners and Workforce Development Board. Uh, what this is, is the Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act is federal funds from the Department of Labor. That money is issued to the state, and then from the state, it's issued to local areas, workforce areas. So what this agreement is, is is to be able to give us the the monies to operate our Homicide Job Center and provide our training services, thanks to that effect, uh, through the state of Ohio.
Okay, um, do any of these need the prosecutor's approval?
I did submit the subgrant, it's due to be prosecutor for review, and he said there's no problem with the court.
Well, we leave it.
Same, per prosecutor.
Okay. Um.
Excuse me, is Bill with him? He's on, he's.
Oh, he's asked. So so we'll just put per prosecutor.
All right.
Okay, the first one I did not request due to the fact that he reviewed the original contract. Okay, this is just an extension. Um, next is to authorize, uh, Mr. Hernandez, President of the County of Board of Commissioners to sign the memorandum of understanding, MOU, between Trumbull County uh, Homicide Jobs Partners and the Trumbull County Board of Commissioners in the Workforce Development Board, this is a two-year program, I we are in a two-year fiscal cycle for the Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act Fund, so during that time, usually the beginning, this is when all this administrative work has to be completed. Uh, what the MOU is, it's a cost-sharing agreement between what's called mandatory partners and non-mandatory partners, mandatory partner would be like, all the Department of Disabilities and, uh, the State of Ohio Wagner Kaiser Group. What they do is, in essence, is they say we have a uh, one, two, three, four, five FTE equivalent, which is their percentage of uh, and office space fronts. And, uh, so what they do is, what we do is, we, they share in the cost of operating the Homicide Job Center and, uh, the non, the non-required, like, uh, flying high incorporated and, um, Kent State Trumbull, those are voluntary, uh, uh, agencies, you know, organizations that assist with, uh, operation costs. So what we do is, it's a, it's a state, uh, one that completed, it's a state agreement, and we're asking for his, uh, signature, uh, for to, uh, complete the agreement for two-year period, because our, our funding is secondary to two-year periods. So, uh, they they help with the operational cost during that two-year.
Now, I just, I get what you're focused. Sure.
I get reverse prosecutor's approval.
I don't, I, I don't, it's a state form, so I don't know the there, I don't know if he's still probably look at it.
He can look at it. Uh, whether he needs it or not.
All right, I'll, I'll do it for you.
Okay, Major, thank you, appreciate it. Um. Okay. Uh, sanitary.
Bob, Bob, my internal controller, sanitary engineers. Commissioners, number thirteen is to authorize a change order for our phase three of the sanitary lateral assistance program in the Higginville Village. Um, basically, we were able to qualify one more person with ARPA funds to receive uh, lateral assistance, so we had three contractors out there, we asked for bids from all the contractors that were currently working, and we selected two and still live in to add this additional house. Um, they previously had a contract for three houses.
So this is adding.
Adding, yes, adding it up. Uh, item number fourteen is the good kind of change order for the Elm Road Water Improvement Project. Um, we had a reduction in quantities that they used, so the contract could now be reduced by forty-nine thousand sixty dollars.
Okay.
And the last thing is also mine, uh, fifteen, it's to move, it's to approve the personnel action for the employment transfer of that new artist from the position of utility club two, which is a page four to the position of utility account club two, which is a page five, and that will be effective on Thursday. Um, I only had one person, one union bid for the job. Um, we had trained her, um, chatter, trained her for the past two weeks, and she's working out great so far. And plans to sign off and wait for her completion as well. With that part said, um, I guess I would like to ask the board if I can post with Rob, which is right, with, you know, toward, um, her moving out, we only have one question to answer from the Academy.
They're short in sanitary, different as it is. Commissioner, I have no issue with that, we need a clerk.
Yeah, you know, we're just filling in, from what position to the other.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Mister Gargano.
Yes, John Gargano, Trumbull County Department of Job and Family Services. Number sixteen is to approve the personnel action for employment of two candidates for job and family services. Uh, this is in the maintenance, uh, department, we lost two maintenance people, one left for a job out of state, and another one left to go to Mahoning County. But, uh, these candidates, uh, would begin employment June second, twenty twenty-five, receive full benefits, they would serve a nine-month probationary period uh, from the, for this part of the job and family services. Number seventeen is, uh, to authorize Commissioner Hernandez, President of the Board to execute on behalf of Trumbull County, the Trumbull County's Profile Plan Budget Report. And this is for Title Twenty Services, it's a block grant, and this budget will be two-year plan, uh, through the federal fiscal year from October one, twenty twenty-five through September thirtieth of twenty twenty-six, and twenty twenty-six, October first of twenty twenty-six through September thirtieth of twenty twenty-seven. And this allows, uh, the social service program to deliver uh, services related to health and related to home services, as well as uh, adult protective services and transportation. Uh, the budget for these, for these time periods is one hundred forty-five thousand five hundred dollar dollars, which is federally funded for the two-year period not to exceed two hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars. Nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one are also mine, that is to go into executive session number nineteen, uh, to, uh, review negotiations and collective bargaining strategy for Trumbull County JFS. Number twenty is to reconvene uh, on that, also, and then number twenty-one is to accept or reject the tentative agreement with them. And number twenty-two is to approve the ratings for an increase for non-bargaining employees of JFS and the Child Support Division. And this would be, as you see, effective August twenty, August first of twenty twenty-five and August first of twenty twenty-six.
Thank you, John. Bye, John. Take it off. You figure taking off my hands.
To execute, well, we have another.
But we have to go back to what?
Well, we gotta go back to eighteen. Yeah, to adopt the resolution approving usage of the commissioner's website for county legal notices uh, regards to competitive bidding uh, pursuant to ORC three oh seven point eight six and three oh seven point eight seven, as you know, um, probably we haven't saved a lot of money.
Sure.
On advertising for these bids.
I have an example. Today, that I just had to do yesterday. We had, uh, Sheriff Taylor, Commissioner's Office, we got approved a few, a few roads to be done in some of the townships with ARPA money. So we're spending ARPA money on these roads, however, we have to advertise them, and they went under the Commissioners Department, we just spent one thousand eight hundred and thirteen dollars and six cents.
Yeah, and.
For advertising for bidding.
So this is gonna be, and just so everybody knows, Jimmy and everybody to, you know, get onto the commissioner's website to, you know, look at these projects.
Well.
Because they won't be bidding the paper.
That's my question, we need to get that out there, it's not gonna be.
Right, this is why we don't notice it anymore in the, the newspaper.
Right.
Right? What's, what's the standard, like, so why should, Taylor, because she's your fellow translator? So like, why should you have, um, and I know there's, um, Dodge, and there's other, uh, it construct, et cetera, et cetera. Um, you know, in a lot of cases, even with my own organization, whenever we do things, we have to advertise, like, in three different things. Does, uh, does the commissioner have a policy on that? Is it, is it just our website, is it just, and is there a procurement part in the website that you go to? Sorry, just questions.
You, you need to get the bidding documents?
To get the, yeah, well, to actually see the advertisement for bids.
Yeah, it would be, it would be listed on the website, and I I don't insurance, it's also, has to be listed on the bulletin board.
Bulletin board and a.
So I would be posting it up here, I mean.
I'm just trying to find.
It's a little, it's a little, yeah, sure.
Sorry. I mean, obviously, you wanna get it out there to get the best bid. And I know, and a lot of.
Nick, I'm in Trumbull County Planning Commission. So right now, with a lot of bids and public advertising, sometimes it's grant specific and great guidelines. Um, the rest is generally guided by higher vice code, it has to be in a paper of local circulation currently, at least once, um, or at at, at least once or twice, but we also have the the workaround that we have that competitive bidding site qualifies as a second. This new update to a higher vice code uh, changes the requirement from putting it in a paper of local circulation to using our county commissioner's website or.
Or Facebook, it could, so technically, just to be fair, it could be any outlet. It could be any electronic outlet, just.
Yeah, but it we, it has to be standard across the board, but it changes the requirement from, uh, so paper circuit, local circulation, to using that website media, which as Sheriff does, is gonna save us, uh, quite a bit of money, because one bid is a thousand dollars. I know our public hearings that we have to advertise for the grants are sometimes nine hundred. I know our public hearings that we have to advertise for the grants are sometimes nine hundred, eight hundred dollars. And that comes right out of, that's straight dollars in grants, so that's less money than we can spend on grants. But um, this is going in line with enough to revise code, changing the requirement from bidding in a paper of local circulation to allowing us to bid on our local website, social media pages. So long as it's consistent with our policy of procurement. I think this is update for the guidelines to be in line with that code.
Just other questions or thoughts? Thank you very much. Just one, uh, is there gonna be a consistent place that we do that? Or is it gonna be spelled like, you know, the advertisement for bid, I wanna put this up a bit. Um, we're gonna bid this on our, you know, advertise on our commissioner's website or something like that, so that, cause I mean, one day you put it on Facebook, the next day you put it on something else, someone is looking to bid in Trumbull County.
Oh, they would be consistent with it, yeah, they would, they would be very.
Just one, just on, just on the site, on the site, okay.
Nick, I'm explaining, I believe just because it says commissioner's website.
Yeah.
He's even if the planning commission, then we would have to advertise on the commissioner's website. Everything's gonna have to, if I'm reading the website correctly, everything will be going through.
You're not gonna have a bid.
Right, it'll be consistent for everything, regardless of whether it's anything approved by the commissioner, it'll be on the commissioner's website. Whether it's for uh, that sanitary engineers or area at the highway or the planning, it'll all be on the commissioner's website.
Okay, thank you very much. But we need to get that out to the public, so everybody knows that there's gonna be a change, right?
I don't know if the Tribune would want.
Well, that's why it's on here. But I would be happy to send a press release.
Well, I. I think we need to note that on, on our website.
Yeah.
Yes, they're, really.
Definitely a change and, and maybe put out a letter up to building trades or something. Just, just even if it's on your agenda, that hey, we're moving to this, you know, thing, and this is where we're gonna be, at least it's in the minutes for future, say, hey, we, we had it out there.
What we should do for this site is literally have a tab just for, for this.
We do, oh, okay, they're already just, yeah, pull it up, yeah, yeah, that's awesome.
And Jim, you can see here, you'll be able to see all the non affidavit, all the parts and pieces, actually, it's a kit. You'll see the non affidavit, the non conclusion, the drug free workplace. You will actually see that that's all here and readily available as it is now, let alone where we're headed to in the future, so.
Why she, why she has something, procurement tab, I go there, I get all the affidavit, non affidavit, so.
And then there is also a link to DemandStar for the ones, because we'll still use DemandStar when that language is within the legal limits. That we're using, so.
There we go.
So.
If you come here, you see right on the commissioner's page, bid opportunities, you click that and then all of our bids come up with our public hearings that we advertise, and then here's all of our required forms.
Thank you.
You're welcome, so like, right now, um, uh, old buy it up, we'll pull that one up, I can literally hit view, downloads, and then there's the legal notice.
Sweet.
Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Raymond. Raymond, I'm still gonna say, I'm gonna tell him that you need to, any comments, you're a good, good comment from the press on there.
Well, I was gonna ask Raymond if they would print it, but I don't think they will. We'll find another way, we'll find another way.
Okay, Casey?
Um, Casey McDonald, nine one one record. Um, this is just a, you guys tabled the same one from last week to, although I was starting phase one. There were some questions on where to pay for this project, why we should move forward, getting the current, kind of before the horse, those kind of ideas, I just wanted to provide a little bit more information. Um, phase one would get us started on the renderings, the structural engineering studies to tell us exactly what the cost would be to move forward, so you guys know exactly what number you need to try to find for funding. Um, this project would be below ninety three thousand eight sixty one. Um, I say below because of the thirty thousand dollar for the structural engineer for the testing. Um, we would go out for quotes for that, so it could potentially lower depending on how many areas of building they need to test and see if they need reinforced to get to that risk category four. The remainder of the phase, if you said, yes, we're gonna go forward, we're gonna get money, we're gonna actually move you guys. The final phase for mechanic would be another forty two thousand nine fifty and for the consultant would be one eighty two, two forty six. That is all encompassing of the entire move, like if you said, yes, we're moving, yes, we have money, we're gonna make this project go. That is them doing all the renovations, the furnishings, the networking, the migration of all the existing equipment, it's not like just saying, um, we're gonna move my office from here to there. It's all the equipment, the technology, the nine one one, the trunk lines for nine one one, so it's a lot more than just saying we're gonna relocate offices, there's a lot more to it and that's why those costs are there. Additionally, I know you guys haven't had a chance to maybe get down to see the dispatch center. I just kinda wanted to, I took a couple of pictures today to kinda show you what we're dealing with at our center. Not to beat a dead horse, because I know you guys are aware that we need to move. I also know that you're aware that the can's been kicked down the curb since nineteen ninety nine. That building came in in nineteen ninety nine, it was supposed to be a temporary location. They flooded out of that location twice. We're at the point where we need to move, we can't just keep kicking the can down the road. I know you're looking at potentially sales tax of going out to the voters to increase that. I know I've proposed possibly doing an improved parcel assessment uh, like they do over in Mahoning County. Um, I'm a firm believer, I get that it's political suicide for any politician to raise taxes, I understand that. It's also political suicide for you to be in office for four years and nothing get done and things still stay the same. And past boards before you, past administrations before me, you know, things haven't gotten done that need to be done. And it doesn't really instill a lot of faith in the community if this is where you come to work every day. Go ahead and scroll down, so that's just our entryway. There's our building. Now, how am I supposed to get prospective dispatchers to come into work when this is what they're walking into for an interview? Keep going. And I get that, you know, we're in the situation we're in, this is our grass right now. And I get that every department's shorthanded. I mean, I'm at the point where I'm about ready just to call and say, hey, bring over a mower and leave it out and I'll mow the grass, that's a week. Keep going. This, that's our, our, um, that has fallen on dispatchers at least three or four times. It's held together with duct tape, bubble gum, and super glue at this point. Um, keep going. Keep going. That's the break room, the alleged break room.
In the bathroom.
In the bathroom, so not only, you know, somebody goes and uses a facility and then they get to eat lunch there. So I'm not trying to be combative or argumentative, I get that we have no money. I just wanted you to kinda get a little glimpse of what everybody goes into every day and why when we try to bring candidates in for interviews, nobody wants to work in an environment where there's no windows, there's no fresh air, there's no getting out, there's no actual dedicated break room where you're not sitting there while somebody's in your facilities at the same time. It's a dismal situation. And for over, you know, twenty five, thirty years, it's been that and it's progressively worse. Because I get it, you don't wanna put money into a building that's junk, that's a, that's a graded F. But we also have to figure out something to get us out of that and move into a new building. And I'm asking for phase one to kinda start, and I know that you don't have an idea of where we're gonna get the money. But this process for phase one is gonna be about three to four months. So let's say in that three to four months, you guys decide we're gonna go to the voters and say, let's raise the sales tax, or we're gonna add an assessment. Or go to the voters and ask the voters if they would support an assessment. Trumbull County nine one one has never, from what I've been advised, since nineteen ninety nine, has never went to the public and said, we need your help to help fund us. We charge the agencies we dispatch for. If we did the assessment or if you did the sales tax, we could easily tell those communities, we're not gonna charge you for dispatch services anymore. That would in turn put that money back into those townships and villages and cities to where when they needed new ambulance, they wouldn't have needed to come for ARPA money because they wouldn't have been paying us a hundred thousand dollars to dispatch for. They would have had the money to do it. By doing the bigger picture of fixing the dispatch center, you're impacting everybody in the entire community because if you told me I had to pay forty dollars a year for a property assessment, I don't want my taxes to go up either, but guess what? Every single person in this town, in this county calls nine one one, calls the dog board, and calls the coroner, calls for an ambulance, it touches every single aspect. So you're paying for the services that you are gonna utilize. This ninety three thousand, I'm asking that potentially if we could use that special fund that the outgoing clerk had left behind, there was some money that was, I was told that could be potentially used for nine one one. Let's do phase one for the ninety thousand dollars, let's get the renderings, let's find out what the number is. Because if it comes back and they say, oh, it's gonna be eight million dollars, you guys are gonna say, there's no way we can do it. Then you're gonna need to make hard decisions of, we're gonna need to put some money into the horrible building that we're in to make it workable.
Well, here, here's my, I don't, I don't wanna cut you off, right? You're asking us to approve a, a plan or the design for a building that uh, Cortland City Council, or Cortland went to city council uh, to move their uh, facilities to the same building, are you aware of that?
They're, they're tempor, it's temporary.
No, 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 they went there last night, they asked city council to move their services to the same building. And why would I approve a contract that's being negotiated with another agency?
From, from the documentation and the conversations I've had, that they're still hopeful that we're coming there and that is just a temporary move while their city plans were being renovated, while their buildings being renovated.
Well, well, the point of it is, is first of all, we don't have the money, secondly, why would I enter into agreement with a design firm on a, on a building that we don't even have an agreement with? Yeah, it's one understanding it needs a completely new roof and you're looking for somebody to come in here and do all these repairs.
They were waiting.
And we know it's gonna probably cost us two million dollars, so it's not the hundred thousand, yeah, it's a hundred thousand at first. But if we get a design saying now it's gonna cost us two million, where are we gonna get two million?
That's where.
That's our problem, and, and the big problem I have is, these problems ha- have existed for a while. Did you come to the board when they had it, thirty eight million and ask them?
I wasn't here then.
Two years ago, last year?
I wasn't here when ARPA funds were available. They were already spoken for.
You wasn't here in twenty twenty four?
I got here in July thirty first of twenty twenty four, ARPA funds were already spoken for and I asked if we could have any other ARPA funds and they said, you already have three projects that were approved, which one of my projects?
She did come, Commissioner's, Alice Stephen Johnson, she was your assistant, right?
I hear these problems.
She came time and time again, and they were very clear, just to be clear on what the previous board said. We gave you Mark's radios, or Mark's Tower, we gave you, um, there was nine hundred some thousand in technology.
The command vehicle, the, the, all the equipment.
And then there was a current project, I can't remember what.
It was all, it was all for the command vehicle, all things I didn't.
So they turned you down, is what you're saying?
Yes.
So there's a couple of things here, what I don't understand is this Cortland, the, the situation with Cortland and what, you know, what, what the Trumbull County Health Board Department is looking to do.
I, I.
I mean, it makes no sense.
The, the conversations that I was told, number one was that I was asked by um, Mr. Migliosi that, hey, is it gonna impact you, your guys' project at all if the city of Cortland moves in here temporarily while their building is being renovated? Is there any renovations on their city center? And that's why they were temporarily being moved, and I said, no, because our project is gonna be at least seven, eight months before we would even get started, and they would be out of there by then.
Well, the board member that I talked to, never mentioned temporarily.
And then in addition to the roof questions, they know they have to replace the roof and they're planning on replacing the roof. They were waiting on us for our structural engineering test because if it came back that the roof needed to be reinforced, they wanted to do all that while they had the roof off and they were replacing it, that way it would save costs for everyone.
But it would have been at their cost.
It would have been at their cost and they were gonna do it while it was open and being done, not after the fact.
Did council vote no to move into that building?
That's what I understand, but uh, uh, does that mean that they're gonna come back? I mean, the problem is, you got two different people that's trying to get the same same room. All right, and, and, and we should have been aware of that. What happens if we would have passed this last week and council would have approved it last night? I mean, it's just unknowns.
Well.
First of all, you know, where are we gonna get to a hundred thousand and then where are we gonna get to two million, which I stated that. We, we know it's gonna cost us a million and a half to two million to move. Right, do we spend another hundred thousand to know what it's gonna cost us when we don't have the money? That's the question. And, and, and then we got the, we got the coroner, this, this.
I know.
It's moved, I mean.
It's a secret, I keep bringing up what I bring up about sales tax, you know, I'm four, four to a hundred percent, quarter percent across the board. I know Commissioner, and we, 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 we differ on it. But what we could do with the quarter percent, uh, we could, if it was gonna be a, a ballot initiative, uh, we could word it and make it for nine one one or for the sheriff, for, you know, for those types of purposes. So that maybe to fund the general, so that we have some money to work with in the general.
You could take an improved parcel to the voters in November and push it up to the voters that forty dollars a year for every improved parcel would prob, I, I've reached out to the auditor for numbers, I haven't gotten the exact numbers yet. But I believe last time I talked to her, it was right around three million dollars a year, it would bring it. So you're telling me any, anybody who owns a house or an improved parcel is not gonna blink and spend it forty dollars a year, knowing that when they call nine one one, the phone's gonna get answered and they're gonna have staff there that have enough equipment, technology and, and the facility to handle the type of calls that are coming in there every day, over three hundred thousand calls a year we handle. If you put that out.
A lot of that's gonna be eliminated if we get new equipment, because you're only getting about what, ninety thousand emergency calls, the rest of them are non emergency calls, correct?
Two hundred thousand or not.
So those numbers, you know, that equipment should have been there a long time ago to get rid of those.
But that equipment's also gonna cost a lot of money. I can tell you right now that any, any AI handling feature to handle that, those calls is gonna be astronomical through the roof. What I'm saying is if you go out to the public and if you say, if you as a family of four cannot go to McDonald's one time in a year, that's what's gonna cost you to help nine one one. Cause it's forty bucks if you take a family of four just through McDonald's, we're not talking like a nice sit down dinner somewhere. The problem with politics in general is when you get people in office at any level and they don't do what they say they're gonna do and they spend the money frivolously. In my previous county, I was told by the commissioners, we aren't gonna put a levy on for nine one one because they didn't want it associated with them to get reelected and hurt their chances, I get it, I understand that. So I did it in an odd year when there wasn't a commissioner running for election. I went out and I beat the pavement, which you can't do nowadays, you can just give out information. And guess what? It passed and we brought in five million dollars. And then at the end of that day, at the end of that year, when we ran, when we installed new radio towers, when we installed new nine one one, when we launched text to nine one one, we publicized it, we said, hey, this is what we did with your tax dollars. What we said we were gonna do to help impact response time, safety in the community, all those things, we publicized it so they knew, hey, they did what they said they were gonna do. They spent the money on all the things they said and they're making our community safer. People voted on it and guess what? It renewed last, uh, last fall with flying colors, they didn't even get out and publicize it. It was the flat renewal that passed. Put it out to the vote in, in uh, November for a forty dollar a year per parcel, so it's twenty bucks a half. That'll bring in about three million dollars a year, within two years, we could pay off a new nine one one center and we would have the money where that we wouldn't have to charge those communities we dispatch for. And then it's not on you, the public has a say, they can vote no. And then we have hard decisions to look at of whether you put it on yourselves after that.
It's, Mahoney County is a, kinda modeled after Mahoney.
Mahoney County has a parcel, but there's, there's a lot less, I don't know if they have other funding coming in, if their need isn't as high as ours, but.
Justice, they have a justice tax.
They have a separate.
Oh, they have a separate.
But, but when you look at, you know, thirty years of neglect and nobody hears, you know, nobody in this table, it's nobody hears fall, it's just, that's how it's happening. Nine one one is always the second, you know, nobody thinks about it until you call nine one one and they're not there to answer it. Or the service is delayed or technology's not there, just Friday night, we had phone issues there, nine one one was down, I was dealing with that for two hours. You know, we have, like I said, that ceiling that, that we showed, it fell on people multiple times, we have despot or dropping out on people. I'm not here just saying, hey, we need, you know, I wanna, a despot massages me while I sit there, I'm not asking for those things. We're just asking for things that operate.
Well, there's no doubt, Casey, I've been coming here even before Commissioner, I've seen you here a couple of years, I think.
Yeah.
Since I've been here, past several months, uh, with this. So Commissioner, I think we're gonna have to make a decision on how to, you know, fund this, to get this moving, I mean, you know, maybe we put something on the ballot like, you know, she had mentioned.
Well, if you're looking at sales tax increase, now forty dollars a month increase, now those more water rate increases, how much can a person on the same come? You know, how much more can they stand, and that's what I say, we need to take it to the voters. I'm not putting the tax on, on the voters approval, plain and simple.
Well.
And is it needed, I agree, but you know what? Past boards had the money to correct the problem and they told you no.
Yeah, but we're a new board.
Yeah, but I'm not putting the tax on it, I mean, I understand.
We are a new board, so, you know, we have to keep in mind that, you know, that those boards that kick the can down the road, like we always say. Casey brings up a good point, you know, it could be.
So, so where's the dog pound at, where's the corner at, I mean, tax have to.
Exactly, well.
So so where's the dog pound at? Where's the border at? I mean, tax after, I mean, you wanna put some taxes on the ballot?
Uh, I I'd like just a straight tax across the board, quarter percent into the general of that.
Quarter percent isn't gonna, isn't gonna solve all the problems.
No, but it'll bring eight million a year into our into our general.
Maybe, maybe not. We'll have to see how the sales tax are going this year.
Anyway, I will keep pounding that as long as I'm here. Uh, it's needed. Um.
It's definitely needed. Just somebody show me where we get the money. Where do we get the money?
Well, the only the only problem with that is if you don't know where the money's gonna be now, you're not gonna know where it's gonna come from. If there's not any new taxes or any property assessment. And then in four years, there's gonna be a brand new board here, sitting here doing the same thing, saying the same exact thing.
Okay, so Commissioner Malloy's not here. Probably it'd be a good idea, I think, again, Tacey, and I appreciate your you continually coming and your the work that you're doing there and the people that work there. Because I know they're working in an environment that is, nobody wants to work. Um, when Commissioner Malloy returns, I think for right now, evidently it's probably gonna have to be tabled once again, I believe.
I'll reach out to the Health Department, see what the issue is with that. From what I was told, it was temporary, so I'll find out a more permanent, you know, answer to that. So I can let you know next week.
Um, well, keep in mind, well, we did we decide Commissioner Malloy won't be here next week. Um, we're still planning on. Chrissy, will you be here next week or can you?
I'll be early on Thursday.
What time?
It's not set in stone yet.
Okay, we'll have to make a decision on that. We still haven't discussed that. Uh, after the, Lisa, we've discussed it, but we're not sure yet whether we'll have a meeting or not. Uh, we we won't have uh any IT, anybody here to run the, you know, broadcast, so I'm not sure. But in any case.
IT can't come up and do it?
Uh?
IT can't come up?
I don't know.
I used to do it. I haven't for a long time.
Well, for any of the meetings, hopefully the other in his office, the IT department, send somebody up to run it for.
I don't think it's an issue. So figure it out here, at least one, two.
We'll discuss that. Tacey, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, we will continue to.
Before you move on, I think it's really important because this board wasn't here, Tacey, I do think you need to explain to the board what the feasibility study, the amount of money that was put into that, just so everybody's on the same page. And if that Portland building is not an option, we also need to talk about the fact that the feasibility study pretty much said no other, no other buildings that were looked at were an option. So we would have to go back to the drawing board.
Correct.
We need to make sure everybody understands all of that because that's money that was incurred, that was spent. To identify a building.
Yeah, it was right around one hundred fifty thousand.
And it was a hundred, yeah, I mean, it wasn't cheap by any means and there it's a four hundred and forty p inch shot. I mean, it's it's significantly large. It studied three buildings. Oh, we added a fourth.
So it's and if the Portland Bank building is not the one that we have forward with, you'd have to do an entirely new feasibility study, which means that the consultant fee would probably double compared to what it is now. My only thing it is, I understand your concern about the Portland Bank if if they're looking at another tenant in there, which was not what we were told. If we confirm firm that out to where no, it's still our building if we want it. That's why I was asking for the ninety thousand dollars out of that, you know, outgoing clerk's, you know, extra million that she left for special projects that we could use that to get this ball rolling because at the end of the day, you're still gonna need all this stuff done while you're looking for the money. And that buys you four more months while we do that and the ball's still moving forward. And then you can look at your, you know, can we put this out to the vote in November for for an assessment um to raise those funds? Um, that's that's all I was meaning is to, you know.
I mean, that this has nothing to do with you, but you know, um the building down on Chestnut, we did a feasibility study on that. It cost us how many thousands of dollars? We 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 did the dog pound, it was two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, but but no, no funds to put in. And and I don't wanna spend another hundred thousand to say this is where it can go, but we don't have money to put it there. You know, if we had all these hundreds of thousands of dollars that that we spent, we probably would have enough money to start moving you.
No, I I understand. I understand exactly what you're saying.
But all all that bought, you know, and and now we got the, you know, emergency management that they may wanna move for the coroner's office. I mean, it's it's project after project after project, like nobody comes up with the answer, where is the money coming from? Except on the backs of the taxpayers. And the taxpayers, the ones I'm talking to, are saying, no, no, that may be different if you take it to the ballot. I don't know. But I know the ones on fixed income, they're telling me, don't put it on us.
Well, um, first thing first.
And and do you need it? You absolutely need it. There's no question about it.
Let's find a.
I just wish I had, I just wish I had the thirty eight million dollars because I I would redirect some of that money.
Oh, believe me. I wish, I know, I know prior to the command vehicle project, I know Patty, which, you know, she had asked for ARPA funds for a new center. Um, I know it was asked for, to me, that would have been the best bang for your buck, but, you know, none of us would go back and say, let's do it that way. So thank you for your time.
Yeah, let's find.
I'll get an update on the Health Department.
Yeah, I'd like to know what's going on there. That was the first I heard of it and that's that's.
I knew they were in there, I but I, it was told to me it's temporary while they're, they were doing renovations, so.
Frank could call me if he'd like, you know, I'd like to talk to Frank.
The only question is, and I don't really know if it's temporary, why would, why would there be some disagreement over moving something temporary? You know, to me, it would be more of a permanent move.
I don't know.
Why would Council members all say a temporary move? I don't know. I don't really, you know, maybe I can reach out to the mayor and ask, ask him to find out what happened actually.
You know, I'll reach out to uh Frank Migliozzi. I have all these numbers.
Okay.
And find out what that story is, what's going on there. Because we do need to know that.
Well, I mean, it could signify.
And is there really an agreement that if we do move there, what's it gonna actually cost us?
Yeah.
Does anybody ever know?
I have the written offer from them that we are to move in for free. The only cost we have to spend is our utilities for our electric and power and to share.
Is it all the utilities or just ours?
Ours and our maintenance and share maintenance costs with them. But they were gonna take care of the roof and they they had reached out, they said basically, hey.
They were gonna take care of the roof?
Yeah, they were doing, they had to do the roof anyway, prior to us even being a possible tenant, but they had reached, but they had reached out to me and said, if you need it re- um reinforced to meet that category four risk uh level, to let them know when they were doing it because they could take care of that while they were doing the roof, so that would save, you know.
I just wanted to make sure you talked about all that, Tacey, because they weren't here for that and you did have those conversations.
Yeah.
You did, you do have an agreement with them. Again, is it a, is it a legal contract? No. But it is, you went to them, they agreed.
We have an offer. I brought it to the commissioner. So prior to you guys getting elected, I had brought brought it to the board then and there was, you know what there was. So it went nowhere and it seems like it's, I'm a hamster on a wheel, just keep spending. So that's pretty much what it is.
Okay, Tacey.
Okay, thank you for.
Well, we need to verify it, that's for sure, because I'm being told one thing by a board member and I'm here to.
We gotta call, we gotta call out to them already. So Patty was listening and she's gotta call in, so we'll get an answer for it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tacey. Okay, twenty five, we enter an executive session, the higher vice co one two hundred three G three. Uh, conference attorney concerning disputes involving public body that are subject pending for imminent court action. And then we will reconvene from executive session, ORC one two, one two two G three for the same. So, firm agenda content, you want?
Um, yes, I just wanna make sure, so I'm removing and holding item number nine. That's C L R utilities.
Oh, yeah, we have to hear it back from them.
And I'm also doing the same to nine one one thing.
Twenty three.
And I believe we skipped twenty four, which is the two toes three. I guess.
Good, uh, Melwes, you wanna get on that? Twenty four?
Oh, uh, sure. Um, so the authorizing for Hernandez, present on the board of Truma County Commissioners, six, two hundred and half, Truma County. Renewal certification application Ohio Electric governmental aggregators and affidavit with the public who go public utilities commission of Ohio Docking Division. Um, so this is just for you to sign the paperwork for the affidavit that goes to FUCO for the electric.
Right.
The gas was just done.
Just to make it clear, we don't have to go through Buckeye to do that.
This is just an affidavit.
We could do that on our own.
Yeah, this has a, this is standard paperwork.
This is, it will be amended, it's, it will be amended if if you switch. TCAO would come in, it just needs to go to verify that we are remaining PUCO certified.
Right.
We have to be PUCO certified, you know, that.
To have an aggregate program and ours is still until next, what, March, or April? Yeah.
And, yes. But commissioners, you do need to, you are, you are gonna have to make a decision on the gas facilities, um, like in the next two weeks.
So prosecutor's office, something is.
He sent us a, uh.
Um, he did. He sent us an explanation two weeks ago on the elect, the uh gas. Because there was questions whether that had tied us to a certain vendor and he was very uh clear in saying that it does not tie you to a vendor, it's just a requirement. You have to be FUCO certified to run an aggregate program. Um, and beyond that, as Sharon said, it it's an affidavit. It can be changed at any time to reflect who your provider will be going forward. Um, yeah, when I put on last time, it wasn't.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
But why is he recommending?
Uh, it's where we currently have a business. Because we're with him right now. Yeah, we're with him right now. Correct.
But I still like that for prosecutor's approval.
Yeah, he did. He actually sent out a pretty extensive letter, Commissioner. Uh, uh, we would have to look it up, but.
Yeah, he did.
Um, he did mention, you know, the fact that we didn't have to utilize Buckeye to do that. That's what was unclear, you know, because we have to go through Buckeye.
I think it was received on five nine twenty five, so you got a prosecutor's. Specifically about.
When was that sent? Uh, again, what's the date?
Five nine twenty five.
Commissioner, five nine twenty.
And that was on the electric? That was out of the gas.
So at the time, that would have been for the, it would have been for the gas to go. At the time, I believe, was that was on, can you check to see? I'm sorry, Lisa, what was on around five nine?
It's right there.
Yeah, but he's saying, so which one was that in reference? Oh, here's the paper. See the exhibits attached there?
Yes.
Was it for gas or what should have been for?
There are actually two different subject matters. One was PUCO, one was the gas aggregate.
There's two, yeah.
Gas aggregate is expiring, that's why. It's a different situation. It has nothing to do with the.
Right, PUCO, we have to, I mean, we have to re- re-up that.
You have to have that so that you can have an aggregate program, which we currently do.
So can you see if that was the gas or the, I'm sorry, it was on the application?
So, well, it says the paperwork does not involve getting trouble counties to utilize.
Yeah, that's the notation, but please.
That was, that was per uh prosecutor Danzo.
And and I think I'd just like to have that.
Gotcha.
As a tip, put that right on.
We got it. It was his, yeah, definitely.
Well, anyone else? Any, ready to have any questions?
Oh, Nick.
Nick Coggs, Truma County Planning Commission. Uh, I actually have two topics I wanted to talk about. Um, one is we received your request from Valley Economic Development Partners, one of our partners who was here last week. They are submitting an Appalachian Regional Commission application to expand the small business resource center for the Mahoney Valley. Uh, this is something that they they do for all of our, uh, what the federal government considers small and micro businesses, all of our entrepreneurs. Uh, this is a resource center for everybody in Truma County. This would be no funds. They're not requesting anything. They're just a letter of support so they can apply to the Appalachian Regional Commission, expand this facility. Um, every small business in Truma County is, can either receive assistance or has received assistance from them. Uh, this is, in my opinion, a very worthwhile application. Uh, this is a copy of the letter of support. Um, the applications do Friday, so I do need to ask permission from the commissioners to add a last minute agenda item to authorize uh Commissioner Hernandez to uh sign a letter of support on behalf of them. Um, and this is a copy of the letter of support. I do have the Word document and I can send you the language over, Lisa, I'm sorry.
Well, they they work along with, they work along with uh East Gate, the Planning Commission, Lake River and part of the uh. I believe it's important, very important.
Uh, and to my understanding, this will not interfere with any of the county applications for ARC funds either. This is for a separate facility for the small businesses. But this is, they're they're putting that application to expand our small business resource center. They need your letter of support to submit that application on Friday.
Okay, um, Lisa, would you be able, Commissioner, you have any, from, would you be able to drop that letter?
I'll, um, I'll send you the Word document of that letter. All it needs is a date and letterhead. Um, and I can send you some standard language we've had for another letter of support, just to add to the agenda item.
Could we get that here tomorrow?
I will have it before the end of the day today.
Lisa, can we get it for tomorrow? Okay.
Uh, the second item I wanted to discuss was something that was sent to me this morning. Um, it's areas of concern on proposed federal budget. Um, two items in here, the community development block grant is being proposed to decrease by three point three billion, completely eliminating funding to community development block grants. Um, so that that is the allocation that you recently passed that went to the city of Gerard, Townland Township, uh, Weathersfield, Crane Drive, um, and Mesopotamia Township. If this proposed budget were to pass this way, decreasing those funds, we would no longer receive that. We wouldn't be able to do those projects. That's also the neighborhood revitalization grants the city of Gerard's going after. That's also residential public infrastructure grants we use to combine with some of our sewer projects to lower that cost for uh our residents to to get sewer to these unsued areas. That's also critical infrastructure grants that we partnered with the county engineer's office to replace bridges that are in need of of replacement. Uh, storm sewer that is currently, we have an application going in for storm sewer improvements in Henry Township. All of those funds would be eliminated. Um, that that is, that would cripple us.
I talked to Julie and she was to send what I need to do.
Uh, I think we need to call. Director Green has offered to pen a letter on your behalf for you to review and sign. Uh, she said she will have it to you by tomorrow.
Yeah.
Um, that is, that is one step. I think we should also call our federal, um, a- as commissioners, you should call our federal uh delegation and tell them that this this would be catastrophic to Truma County. You think we're in hurt for money now, we just passed out six hundred thousand dollars to critical needs. Plus, we have three competitive allocations. Bob, I don't know if you know what your, what we got for residential public infrastructure recently, but that's another seven hundred fifty thousand dollar application Gerard's uh applying for. That's over a million dollars just this year. Uh, it would, that's a million more dollars people are gonna be asking their taxpayers locally to go after or we're gonna be putting on end users for um for sewer or we're gonna be asking the general fund or putting a string on the engineer's office for bridge replacements, storm sewer replacements. Um, on top of that, one of the other programs that was listed to decrease by one point three billion dollars and be completely eliminated was our home partnership program. Our home partnership program, city of Warren is an entitlement city that receives those funds directly and they partner with Truma County. That is what we use for our low or moderate income households to do uh residential rehabilitation. The vast majority of people we assist with this are senior citizens uh on fixed income budgets. These programs, all they do is bring their house into um up to code as far as electrical plumbing. A lot of what happens is a senior citizen has a roof that needs replaced. That is a very common practice. Um, updating siding, covering a lot or replacing uh old windows that have lead-based paint on them to new vinyl insulated windows. Um, that that program will be completely eliminated if this budget passes as well. So we wouldn't have, no longer have assistance for low or moderate income households for residential rehabilitation. Uh, we would no longer have community development block grant that goes to repetitive allegations that have helped our sanitary engineer, our highway engineer, our local townships, our nonprofits, um, all of that goes away. Um, I mean, like I said, just this year, you just approved six hundred thousand dollars for our allocation. Uh, Gerard's putting in another seven hundred fifty thousand dollar application for NRG. We have a residential public infrastructure grant that's going in for Crane Drive. I forget that number off the top of my head. But that's two million dollars this year that we, they're gonna be asking for somewhere else, probably gonna be the general fund. If you think we don't have money now, if these numbers are to be passed, we really won't have it.
Use for pros and this cut.
This is the federal budget, this is the, uh, uh, Trump administration's proposed budgets to decrease the C D B G and the home allocation.
Administration's asking the.
The, yeah, uh, from the, from the email I received is the proposed budget by President Trump. Community development block grant decreased by three point three billion, completely eliminated, home partnership program decreased by one point three billion, completely eliminated. Um, the proposal would eliminate community development block grant programs. That for, which provide formula grants to one thousand two hundred state local governments for affordable housing, small business growth, infrastructure and critical public services. Um, the decrease in funding will increase county costs associated with operating these programs and likely eliminate s- some programs.
That's, well, definitely gotta reach out to Reno and. Reno and, oh, yeah, yeah, oh, it's my, yeah. And that might make a.
As I said, Director Green, Director Green has offered to to write a letter on behalf of Trumbull County for you to review and sign. I believe that is something that you will have to generalize authorizing that that letter to be sent out, but as elected commissioners, I do believe that it would be. Uh, beneficial for each of you to reach out to our federal representatives to let them know that. This is not in the best interest of Trumbull County, it's not in the best interest of the Trumbull County residents.
Totally agree.
Yeah, we just. I will, I've, either myself or Director Green will get you the information.
So we know what what exactly we're talking about when we reach out to them.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah.
Yeah, uh, definitely not good to be, it cuts in those departments. With bridges, road sewers, and then with the, uh, home partnership program for the, you know, underprivileged that. I think that's part of, is that part of, uh. T cap or?
Uh, I don't believe T cap gets funded through that, city of Warren is a tiny city, they get.
On his.
Now, Mike Keys is the head of the community development department, and we have a, uh, consortium agreement with the city of Warren. Um, that allows us to utilize those funds for our home improvement program for residential rehabilitation. I do believe the city of Warren has a, uh, has, they use those funds in other places to help subsidize the cost of, uh. Certain projects, I'm not sure the details of their projects, I'd have to talk to the community development office, but, um, I mean, without receiving those funds, they would. Likely not be able to do a lot of the projects that they do. And I know we would not be able to sustain our home improvement program. Um, and the community development block grants again, without those, our sewers, we, most of them would not be cost effective. Our bridge replacements, we would have to, I I I'd probably ask Gary for more specifics, but I'm assuming some of those projects would have to get queued up down the load, down the road as funding is available and. Depending on how bad some of those bridges may be, possibly shut down bridges, uh, temporarily until we could get the funding to do those. Um, and certainly the storm sewer improvement projects that we're doing now to correct, uh, overdevelopment that has been accounted for storm sewer. We would not have funds to, that would be on the local township to to come with those funds to make those improvements. Um, it just, it it would just put us in 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 all of our local communities in in such a financial situation that. Projects to improve the quality of life or improve the existing infrastructure just not be feasible.
Proposed cuts, Nick?
Those are proposed cuts currently, yes.
Commissioners in general, it's something that you probably should be very aware of, it's not just C D B G, obviously, that's a huge, huge thing as well.
Yes.
Um, but Director Gargano is is potentially gonna be affected as well, job and gaming services on an immense level. I talked about it when Bernie Marino was here, um, and we're kind of finding out that it is probably going to come to fruition, um, part of the big, the, the bill. I don't wanna call it the big people bill, but that is what he's calling it, um. Job and gaming services may lose up to half of its potential federal funding for SNAP programs, and it may lose money for its Medicaid program, so I'll let Director Gargano speak to that a little bit more, but. What that does is if that money isn't, if that money's lost and we can't run those programs as is. We, the, one point, you will have to come back to the general fund and ask the fund to cover those those entities, so commissioners, this is way larger than just, I I do not mean to, by any means. This is not to say one's more important than the other, it's how we play the game altogether, because if it, if this funding is cut, it would be detrimental to this county. I I said that when he was here, and I have no qualms saying that now. Johnny, anything else to say about that?
John Gargano of J F S, uh, I echo what, uh, Alex has indicated, that it would be devastating, uh, if they were to do that. I would have to, the agency would have to come back to you, uh, to have more funding, uh, to support those programs. The other thing with some of the requirements that they're, uh, potentially gonna require the employees to do is going to. Put a a tremendous burden on the present, uh, status of those employees that. We would have to go out and hire many more to, uh, effectively run those programs.
It would be increasing the work by fifty percent, um, so for example, and this is actually not just, um, you know. Spin, this is actually what's in the bill, so we have actually gotten some information that we've been working on the past couple of days to look into these things because we know it's forthcoming. With that being said, they're proposing, for example, for Medicaid, we do one renewal a year, okay? They're proposing that to go to every six months, so that would double the increase in workload of Medicaid alone, not to mention the same thing for SNAP. SNAP is one a year with a renewal. Uh, that could be, you know, increased, uh, there's a lot that's in this plan, a lot.
Excuse me, I'm gonna give you J F S, and for the present, uh, workforce to attempt to do that, it would be unsustainable with them. Because they're already, uh, I'll say drowning in the amount of paperwork that's required and what they need to do to make sure that. Individuals are eligible and redetermination, as Alex has said, is once a year, but now if you're going every six months and you need. All together, all that information, additional information, and at the same time trying to attempt to keep. Uh, other individuals approved or get approved, they, it just won't be sustainable.
On top of work requirements, we mentioned that as well.
And the work requirements.
SNAP currently has work requirements, um, for again, able bodied individuals, we all know that, that's current, no change there. But they are proposing more stringent.
Stringent.
Um, so currently the level is fifty-four, the cutoff is the age fifty-four or sixty-four, they're saying they would drop that down to fifty-four. And then for Medicaid, they are proposing, as we heard, you know, um, a work requirement for all on Medicaid. Um, commissioners, I, again, I said this before, um, when I was at J F S, there was forty-six percent. Um, of Trumbull County on Medicaid at that time.
Recently.
Um, and it has been, what, four years since I've left?
No.
Sorry, two.
Two.
Two years since I've left there, so I don't know if that number's changed, I'm sure it's changed one way or another, but either way, we're talking a significant increase in workload. I just wanna make sure the commissioners are abreast.
Well, we need to, we need to reach out to our federal people and see exactly what the administration is thinking about this, I mean. They're not just gonna hear from, they're gonna hear from everybody across the nation, so. Hopefully, they're just throwing it out there to see what kind of response they get, but, I mean.
Well, we definitely have to make some phone calls.
Yeah.
Get on the boat.
Sure.
Okay, anybody else?
Hey, uh, Mike on the is, um, where were you at with this workers' comp?
Well, next week's the deadline.
Right, right. I mean, are we taking proposals, we not taking proposals, I just want to get it clear.
The board can do whatever they choose to do.
Well, I, I mean.
We do not have to take. Proposals, but if the board wants to.
Well, I, I, and and I've talked briefly with the prosecutor's office, I, I, I just think. If we take them, keeps us in the clear. Um. That that we're opening up, I'm not saying that we should change and we shouldn't change, I just like everybody to have a fair chance at, um. I noticed, uh, Alex in your email to us, you you noted that. That, um, Bob Carr reached out to me and I, I immediately asked you to call him, that's all I did.
Yes, and we did reach out.
And then, and then he also reached out to other commissioners, and you didn't name them, so, um.
Well, they didn't tell me that they were reached out to, I was only aware of one, but.
Okay. I, I just wanna make it clear, he, he just called me and asked me what to do, and I, I put him in touch with you, I, that's all that, and I would do that to anybody.
And I'm not saying anything was done wrong, but I also wanna make it clear that he has dealt with me before in the open enrollment period, and he knew who to reach out to. And that is just the fact, um. If the board of commissioners wants to change the processes or do something different, that's that's that, but it's not fair to the other M C Os who do reach out to county human resources and do follow the procurement policy and and processes that we have set up. When others are going around, that that's.
Well, I don't know if he's going around, it's just briefly, I I think we talked to Commissioner Hernandez.
Yeah, I I talked, I I did talk to him, I told him that, uh, everybody would have the same opportunity. And, um, they submitted the paperwork, I think, you know, we're gonna have a meeting next week, I think we need to look over that, I haven't had an opportunity because I just received it. Um, to look over what these proposals are, what this all is about, um, I did talk, uh, to Alex a bit about it. And, um, we're, you know, the the thing that, the thing that that really. We're at the eleventh hour like we talked about, now here we are, we're at the end of the rope, and now we're supposed to make decisions. That are, that are crucial decisions to make, and and, you know, we, we need time to do this kind of thing, I mean, we can't just take this whole. You know, this whole ball of wax here and just, you know, vote on it haphazardly, you know, so.
Well, commissioners, I think the point is is that you don't have to vote on anything, we're commingling bids and open enrollment, so this is not a bid, this was not put out for bid. This is not what this process is, this is a huge difference. I've given you all the research and information that specifically tells you, and Bill Danzo did agree with my analysis, so. Again, this is something that your human resources director has done year in and year out, even before me. As a designee for the Bureau of Workers' Comp, if if you guys wanna take that over, by all means, I've given you the facts, but.
No, I don't think we wanna take it over, but, but in my brief conversation with the prosecutor's office, they agree with bid proposals. Okay, they think that's a good policy.
Well, that's interesting, cause that's not what was said to me.
That's what they told me, well.
What I'm looking for is if it's apples, is it apples to apples and can the county save money? I don't know.
It's not worth anything, there's no money associated, that's what I'm trying to do.
Okay, cause I would, I had been told differently by an individual I won't name, um, who submitted a proposal that, um, that it saved the county. Hundreds of thousands of dollars, I don't know.
Commissioners, that would be on the T P A side, the M C O does not make any money off of this county, it is paid by the Bureau of Workers' Comp at a state level. So what I'm hearing is you're both talking to people, whatever the case may be, and you're hearing things from them.
No, I, no, I, I had one conversation.
Why would they not ask for human resources director, and we'll give you the facts?
Well, that's, that's why I sent them to you.
Yeah, and I did that too.
I sent them to you, I called off these presentation.
One phone calls that said he tri- he called you, he couldn't get a response.
No, he got a response.
Well, I'm just telling you what he said, he asked if I.
He didn't like the response he got.
Have you? What, what, can I finish, please?
Sure.
And he asked me if I would have you call, and that's what I did, I came into your office and I said, would you call this individual? That's all I had, nobody trying to go around the circle, trying to get to a commissioner, he was just wanting to have a phone conversation with you.
Right.
That's, that's the only thing I did, I think that's the only thing that maybe Commissioner Henry can.
Oh, absolutely, well, as a matter of fact, I I had that, whatever they had, I had submitted, they submitted Alex, I said, get it to Dawn. And give it to Alex, that's, that's what I did.
Nobody, you, nobody's questioning.
I never got anything.
Oh, you didn't?
So that's what I'm trying to tell you guys, I don't know what you're doing, I'm I'm not getting it, so I did not get that.
Did Dawn get it?
Then I have Mr. Carr coming into my office saying that Denny gave me a packet, I don't know what is going on, but I have nothing. So at what point were we not gonna engage, that's where I'm starting to get frustrated in this whole process. So I'm hearing it all from everybody else, but yet I'm sitting right here doing the work, administering the plans every day, holding down the premiums for this county.
I'm not questioning, I'm just questioning, you know, that he contacted other commissioners, only my name's put in there, like, I reached out to him, which I didn't.
No, you did not, and I did not say that, I said he reached out to you, I was very clear.
And then he reached, and then he reached out to commissioners. And now you just only reached out to Denny.
Denny just told me that yesterday. I don't know.
And then he reached out to.
What I'm telling you is he came into my office and said that he spoke with Denny and wanted a packet that he was supposed to have given to me, I have no packet, I have no nothing from you.
Well, the bottom, okay, yeah, well, because I had.
Why I had it, it was in my, in my mailbox today?
Yes, I think those are.
Okay.
Actually, this, did you see this?
No, I'm telling you, I never got a packet, and they didn't drop that off, they didn't go through human resources, I'm trying to tell you guys, they are circumventing, and we're not, for some reason, you're not wanting to.
This came this morning.
And they can, and they were directed to do that, I I directed.
Well, that's not the process, and that's not fair to our other M C Os who didn't get a chance, so they were following the process correctly.
So if there are others.
There are others.
Then I would have them email whatever they got, it's done Friday, so better.
Well, we're gonna have to make some decisions next week, is this the, when does this happen?
Well, I think, I think to back up with what you're saying.
Friday?
What you're saying, Commissioner, is, you know, we need more time than said at the eleventh hour.
Yeah, well, the prosecutor made an opinion, we don't, you know, it's over, I think there's, once that, once that ends of this, next Friday.
It's next Friday?
That's a two-year agreement.
Or this Friday?
It's this Friday, so.
Oh, it's this Friday?
It's not, yes, it's this Friday.
Oh, it's this Friday.
Right.
We're, well.
So I don't know why we waited.
I never even got a packet from these people, who said they wanted to present anything.
They just brought it, they just, the one just brought it yesterday, and the other one emailed.
That's my whole point, how am I supposed to do anything when they're going directly to other people, they never gave me a packet, I can't do my job.
Right, you can't.
Well, who else did you get them from?
Nobody.
Oh.
This is the first one, here it is, on, for the record.
What's that, Cedric? Oh, that's, okay.
Did you, did you get one from Cedric?
No, I did not.
Oh, I got that too.
I didn't get that either.
I think.
Thank you. Not that and that.
This was supposed to be submitted to Dawn to get to Alex, but we had.
You didn't either, did you?
I love this.
I did, I have been.
It went, you can see it right here, two pieces.
Oh.
So again.
Well, I am the clerk, I mean, it's not like, um.
I don't disagree, but this is a human resource, I understand.
So, just to make clear, those are the only two that we.
We have never had this problem that were in past.
So, so, so make it clear, those are the only two that we see.
We didn't ask for them either.
But anyway, we got two of them.
I get it.
Okay, so.
And our current M C O doesn't have to submit anything because our intent is to go with them, but if the board would like to do something else different, by all means.
No, I, no, I think what I'm asking you is just to look over both of them and and just, and and give us a.
At least just to look over, and I know that it's, it it's tied essentially.
Yeah, and give us a recommendation, you know what I'm saying, um, that way you have both in black and white there, um.
Yes, I don't have, I've never had this, so I I just wanna be fair.
In the future, in the future, we need a guideline, here, uh, Lisa, you you had something there, as these things come.
So then, so then, well.
Or maybe Sharon, once your workload is reduced a bit here. You know, when we know that these things are coming, if we could have like a month or two months.
Sure is a schedule.
And a schedule, yeah, if we get.
Of when contracts are up.
And that way, we're, we're under the understanding that, hey, listen, this is coming due, and then if this happens, it's not like a week. Or days before the week, you know, that we're questioning this and then putting H R on the spot and all of us on the spot.
It's not a contract, though, I wanna be clear, this is not a contract, that's why this didn't come up, it is not a contract.
Yeah, but do we have to, does the board have to make, um, uh, approve that?
No.
So we don't even have to approve?
No, that's what I'm trying to tell you.
No, it would get, we're transferred on that.
So.
You guys took away my job, is what happened.
No, 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 I I disagree with that, okay?
So do I.
We're just asking for a clarification, all right?
I think what happened a couple of years ago, there was a a similar situation, and a former commissioner threw a big major fit. About who the M C O was, there was several people involved in it, and it became a problem that. It just ended.
I gave you hope.
Well, this new board isn't gonna do that, we we're relying on what Alex is gonna say here about.
I just wanna be very clear for the record.
I know ultimately, we have to make decisions.
We don't need to make a decision, that's what I'm trying to tell you, this is a non-issue, everything.
Well, I mean. Not a vote, not a vote, but I mean. You know, I I guess the commissioners should know what's going on or who it is, I just don't, to be honest with you, we've been here four months, I don't even know what what this is, really.
And I gave you all that information, commissioners, um, again, it's it's all right here, so. And I gave you all that information, Commissioners, um, again, it's, it's all right here, so.
So, we don't have to do anything, Commissioner. It'll just transfer over.
He wants me to look at these over. I can look these over within the next twenty four hours and let you know, but if you would like to switch. That's something the Board of Commissioners, you have the authority to do that. I'm not by any means saying that you don't.
I think, I think to back up what, what Commissioner Hernandez says was, someone told him he can save hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Yeah, I don't even know what that was about. That was, so that must be.
I mean, is that true?
That was an erroneous statement. I mean.
Yeah, right.
What sounds like claims. They, they don't get paid money. It's just in claims, I'm sure.
Okay, which we do pay out.
I'm not sick enough for Commissioner Hernandez. Someone, someone calls you up and says, I can save you hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Well, then you, when you're questioning what's going on, yeah.
If that's not true, then that's a whole different story. And that's all, that's all we're saying.
Again, I'm not sure who called you up. It's like, it can save you hundreds of thousands of dollars. Um, but I highly encourage you to read my email from last night and look at facts, because the facts are in there, including money, including sun. And, um, that, that's all I'm going to say.
Well, we know what it is now. We know where we're at. We, we know what it, what it, what it's about and, you know. Like I said, you know, from now on, we're going to need time. We can't just be, you know, but, or we don't have to vote on it, but we, we need time to know what it is. I don't even know what it is.
To digest it all.
Huh?
To digest it all.
Yeah.
And then we get down on every contract. They come in here and say you have five minutes to approve this.
Yeah.
But that's not what.
And no, no, and we're not talking, you were just talking.
Because I want to make myself clear. That, that's not what this is. I know people are calling you saying this has to be done. They are incorrect. This does not have to be done. I have given you all the proof that this doesn't have to be done. It is the board's decision on what you would like to do. However, that's what you have myself here to do. I've given you the proof. I've given you the facts. I highly encourage you to look at that and I will end with. The Ohio law does not require employers to formally solicit bids or engage in competitive bidding process during the open enrollment period for managed care organizations. With the Ohio Bureau of Workers' Compensation, that is straight from their website, that is straight from their documentation. Furthermore. Employees are free to choose an M C O during the open enrollment period, enrollment period, but they are not legally obligated, obligated to engage in any bidding process. So again, I provided that to you, um.
Not obligated, but my conversation with the prosecutor's office said it's a good idea, except for proposals.
Okay, so these are the proposals.
And that's what we're doing.
So.
You accepted them.
Yeah.
I know, yeah, he presented it to us, yeah, right, you know.
They should.
This is, this is getting a little.
Yeah, it's just, yeah, right. So you have two in front of you and, and you'll say this one's good and this one's not. Over there.
Yeah.
Well.
Yeah, it's a non-vote situation, so we don't have to. Okay. Is there anything else?
Maybe, Darryl, you have anything?
No, none at this time.
Commissioners, there are, there is going to be a meeting next week, correct? It, and remember, it's going to be done today.
Yeah, Wednesday, Thursday. Wednesday workshop, Thursday meeting.
Yes.
You have no issue with it?
I have no issue with you.
Okay. We'll call a meeting next week. Probably going to be some things that need to be looked at. Best to, you know, keep the county moving and.
Can you, can you keep it short enough that Chrissy could read it?
Yeah. Lisa, can you, can we shorten the agenda?
Well, Wednesday would be the long. You know, Wednesday would be the long, Thursday would be the short.
Yeah, Wednesday would be the long, Thursday's going to be something. Okay, you want to make the motion? I'm done. No, you want to stay? Danny usually is over here, but.
Mr. Jeremiah, I'm going to adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, everyone.